Clerk, the police call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Holster?
She's here, 'cause she's coming through.
I saw her. I'll rotate back around.
Yeah, she's coming. There's Walter.
Ms. Holster? Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
We do have a quorum presence, so we can continue with the meeting. If you all will, please stand and please forgive my seat and join me in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna stand. Ain't no help come and push me back. Gracious and loving Father, we thank you all tonight for your kind mercies and your tender love and care. We thank you how you have protected the city and how you've looked over each and everyone that sits on this diocese as they continue to do the work and continue to make sure the business of the city is continued. Hence, I thank you, Lord God, for allowing me to come back and sit here in this seat after six long months. You've been good, and I have to say thank you for that. So as we continue to move forward tonight, please be in the midst of our meeting, be in the midst of our decision-making, and be in the midst of our hearts and minds as we continue to make sure that this city moves forward. It is in your son's name we pray. Amen. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, we will now move to our public comments and recognize anyone who has signed up.
No one's signed up.
No one? Okay. At this time, we will need to amend the agenda to add two items. First, we need to add approval of the June 11th, 2024 council meeting minutes. Secondly, we need to add the first reading of ordinance O-2407-12. If you approve of this amendment, these items will be included during the remainder of the meeting. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda? The motion is properly motioned second. Well, I ask clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Holster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The motion carries and the agenda is amended. You all have received a copy of the June 11th, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Holster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The motion carries and the minutes are adopted. We're at the point in this session that comes with the mayor's comments and opening comments. I know we have a lot of different things we need to discuss, but let me say first and foremost, it's good to be back. Thank you all for your prayers and continued prayers. Still have a long road to go, but it's been a good run here for me to even be sitting here tonight. So I'm thankful for that. As I said, we have a full agenda heading into the end of the meeting in our closed session. So I'm gonna save my remarks for that particular time and point of the meeting. However, tonight, we do have one presentation tonight, which is a proposal from Mr. Randy Rich of Rich Custom Home Builders to partner with the city of Millersville to submit a Department of Community Affairs Equity Fund Rural Workforce Housing Initiative Grant Application. The county called for a proposal to potentially partner with developers on this grant and received two proposals. The location of the two proposals would require the city of Millersville water and sewer infrastructure. So the county voted to not approve any of the proposals, and the developers in turn contacted the city regarding a potential partnership. Mr. Rich was one of the two developers, and he will present his proposal tonight. The other developer will be given the opportunity to present his proposal at the July 23rd city council meeting. So at this time, I'm gonna call Mr. Rich to the podium, please.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited, and I appreciate the opportunity to come forth to the city of Millersville, Madam Mayor, and the council members. Thank you again. My name is Randy Rich, R-I-C-H. I'm a 100% native Georgian. I was born and raised in Marietta, Georgia, as a middle son along with two brothers. Mom and dad were married for over 50 years, and my dad was an aeronautical engineer, worked at Lockheed in Marietta. I attended college at the University of Georgia in Athens, where I received my Bachelor of Arts degree with a major in political science. And I also attained my Master's degree in business administration with concentration in finance. After getting my MBA, I went to work at corporate, in corporate America, at headquarters for Southern Bell and Bell South for a span of about 20 years, where I worked as manager in the property tax department, responsible for assets in the billions of dollars with a B. And I was responsible for about $250 million of property tax payments every year that I was responsible for, went over my desk. So in the process of doing my property tax job at Bell South, they sent me all over the country taking appraisal courses so I could have the skills to get our company's property taxes reduced and lower our tax bill. So I developed a lot of experience in real estate at a very young age and a love for it. So while working at Bell South, I was also developing real estate skills for myself and future endeavors in things like renovating my first house in Marietta's historical district on Church Street. I also owned homes and townhomes that I rented out to people. So I became a pretty good painter, chic rock repair guy, plumber, small electrical issues. So in 1988, I came out to Lake Oconee to have a look, look around. And I ended up buying the very first lot in Harbor Club that year. Again, that was in 1988. So I've seen almost all of the growth at Lake Oconee. And I was also hearing, you know, a little bit about Lake Sinclair in the background, but my main emphasis was Lake Oconee. So after I left Bell South, I became a licensed builder. And I left Bell South in 2001 and built and remodeled houses all over Lake Oconee. And now I have my sights squarely on Millersville, Georgia, in hot pursuit of a Rural Workforce Housing Initiative. Mr. Carlos Taber with Baldwin County first brought this to my attention when I was given the opportunity to attend the initial project assessment meeting in February of this year. So I've been working on this now for going on six months. And my, how time flies. The One Georgia Authority is the administrator of the Rural Workforce Housing Initiative. This program offers a $2.5 million grant to be used for infrastructure in creating rural workforce affordable housing. They are trying to push home ownership, not rental units, but home ownership, designed to be sold not in excess of $290,000 per unit. And the units must contain at least two bedrooms. So as part of the process for the developer is, and this program is to come up with a conceptual plan for the Rural Workforce Affordable Housing Units. I have done this, and I'm about to share it with you. The property address is 129 Rights Drive, consisting of approximately 55 acres. And at this time, could we... Oh, there it is. Did this come up? Oh, you hit me. So that is the conceptual plan for Phase 1. It consists of 60 units. The 60 units will consist of 10 clusters containing six attached townhomes in each cluster, with all the units having one car garages and driveways. This will allow for two cars to be parked at each unit in the old I formation. The two-bedroom units are currently estimated to be priced at $250,000. And the three-bedroom units are estimated to be priced at $275,000. So with an estimated average cost of $262,500 times 60 units, that is $15,750,000. And then if you add in $2.5 million for grant infrastructure, this Phase 1 project is $18,250,000. And that number in some shape or form will make its way to the tax rolls for the city of Millersville. And the idea here is to make the purchase prices for each of these units lower than the DCA mandated ceiling price of $290,000, which is in the spirit of producing more affordable housing units for our citizens in and around the city of Millersville. So let's take a closer look at the elevations and then the floor plans. So as you can see here, these are attached fee simple townhomes. Fee simple meaning they're for sale. They will be owned by the people that purchase them. They will not be rented. These will be staggered offset townhomes, giving each one a unique look. They will not look like one large rectangular box with six doors. Each cluster of six units will have its own unique color design and material makeup on the facades. If anybody's familiar with del web at Lake Oconee, most of those houses look exactly the same. It's hard to tell what street you're on, because they all look the same. There's nothing against the del web, but I want these to be more unique, more appealing to me personally. I think that's more appealing. Alright, so that's the elevations. So again, they have one-car garage, driveway, one level and two levels. Let's look at the floor plans. Okay, so this floor plan up here right now is the two-bedroom, one-level unit. On these units of approximately 1,100 square feet, you have a master bedroom suite, master bathroom suite, another bedroom on the other side of the house, totally separated by a living space, kitchen. So it's, and it's all on one level. That's the $250,000 house, about 1,100 square feet. The three-bedroom unit is two levels. On the main level, again, you have the master bedroom suite. And upstairs, you have an additional two bedrooms that share one bath. And then here's some more side elevations. You can see how they're, each roofline is unique. They're kind of staggered and set off of each other, where it's not just one big box with a roof on it and six doors. And that is the rear elevation. There's a covered patio on the back. And it's concrete floors, so you don't have to worry about your... A deck just goes through a lot of wear and tear over the years and continuously have to rebuild them, especially if they're uncovered. So this is a covered patio, which would be very nice to have, actually, with very little upkeep over the years. Again, we're trying to make affordable housing. The DCA has indicated 290 was the top. So I'm trying to come in here at 275 and 250 to make it even more affordable for more people. So in closing, I would just like to say again how excited I am and committed to having the possibility of creating Rural Workforce Affordable Housing for the citizens of the city of Millersville and the surrounding area.
Randy, you may want to, you've mentioned to me in our conversations about your handicap units. You may want to mention that on your floor plan. Yeah, that's it. More wheelchair-friendly, because they have more room there to get around. It's the plan that's on the right, y'all. They basically are identical, except for greater radius.
With the doorways.
Right, and the outer doors.
How many handicap units will you have?
I don't know the exact answer to that yet, Madam Mayor. I have to do more research into that and see what's required and that sort of thing, and what the demand is. But I'll definitely, that's one thing I will definitely be looking into.
As far as material choices for exterior finishes, are you pricing this out according to vinyl siding, hardy board siding?
Hardy board. Very, very good quality stuff on the outside. Shooting for low maintenance, survivability over the years, sun, rain exposure. And hardy board is fire retardant also. So there won't be any vinyl on the facades of this house. There might be some in the soffit area, but I don't, I'm not planning on it.
So I've been in many of units like this in Herring County, where you got attached one guard garage. And you said you have 55 acres that you're gonna put. How many units you said you were gonna put out there?
This is Phase 1 we're talking about today, and it's 60 units.
Yes, 60.
And it's comprised of an area of about 11 acres, comprises Phase 1, 11 acres.
I've got a question that the district that I represent borders this property with residents, longtime residents. They've been there, and I'm a little concerned about... If you look at the map, the way it appears to me, you're right up on the property line. And I'm a little bit concerned about privacy that they have enjoyed for quite a few decades. And I wanted to see what type of screening or what would be left there, other than pine trees.
Right. Well, all of that will be taken care of when we go into full detail on the engineering plans.
Uh huh.
I believe everything, well, I know everything will be done according to code with the proper amount of setbacks. And being that's a residential area right behind it, this will be the same thing, basically. So there'll be the correct step back, and I don't see that as a problem. I really don't. I think this is gonna be a place.
Is that setbacks with variance? Or you're gonna have some type of variance in between the buffer zone of what it's in? You're building up to a residence that's been there a long time?
Right. Whatever is required, we'll definitely have.
It may only be, it ain't be 20 feet, something like that. I'm not sure that's accurate, but... That's something I'd like to ask you as you move along with, to keep in mind.
Alright, definitely. No problem.
The other thing I wanted to ask, I'm assuming you're gonna have HOA fees, because of the commonality of buildings and everything, that that would be taking care of the exterior. Any amenities you're gonna end up with?
In this first phase...
Or anything of that nature?
That'll be down the road in Phase 2 and 3. In this first phase, they're gonna be fee simple townhomes.
Mm-hmm.
With no amenities. But I don't think the homeowner's fee is gonna be all that exorbitant. It's gonna be pretty reasonable. And then later on, there'll be amenities, pools, tennis courts, paddleball courts, clubhouse, a lot of green space. A lot of green space.
Yep. That's nice.
And there's a, there's a very beautiful pond area on this property.
Oh, okay.
Mr. James Wright was telling me about existed many, many years ago. And our plans are to bring that back into the green space and probably call the overall project Millie by the Pond.
Any thought about trying to incorporate any commercial, small commercial, small restaurants, small shops? Or anything of that nature that people could walk to be able to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This location is convenient to everything in Millersville.
It is.
It's basically halfway between the lake and downtown. And you've got everything you want close to that. Entertainment, movies, restaurants, shopping, Walmart, great area.
Yep.
What's the road that this leads into, leads from?
441 Columbia Drive, Rights Drive, where the old SunTrust Bank used to be, Del Taco.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then Fernwood turns off of this going down to the cottages.
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to figure that.
You just keep going to the very top of that hill. And continue on through there. Be a nice little drive that leads back to the property.
There's no property scene over there. There's nothing in the property sticks right there. It should go straight there.
There's some, yeah. You've got, you can see them.
Got the old deer processing plant. James and Mary Wright live on the left. You can actually see it on that picture right there, that they're not on the property as plotted right there.
How many additional phases and total units over the life of the project?
Probably two or three more phases of living quarters. And probably 200 to 240 units in total.
And that's units, not beds? Is that correct?
That's units.
And that's gonna cover the 55 acres then, right?
We have 60.
As you already said, there may be other, like, retail. It's all gonna be as well planned.
He said 200, 200.
Plan unit development.
So as you expand up and back out, is it gonna go kind of butt up with heritage at all, track in that area?
Yes. Yes, that's, you can see Heritage Apartments on that one also. It's, it butts right up to Heritage Apartments.
And this, just to remind y'all, if this ends up happening with Randy, this property will have to be annexed, and based on it being annexed, it would be zoned at that point in time too. So that could be a conversation additionally, you know, greater setbacks, those kinds of things could be put in the rezoning and the annexation to make sure some of the items that you were talking about, Mr. Chambers, would be covered.
Okay. We have, currently have infrastructure running up to the top of the hill, or does it turn to Fernwood?
To, to the top of the hill, and it makes a turn and goes to Fernwood.
Yep.
We have not seen topo on the property yet. Rob and I actually rode up and looked at as much of it as we could, without it being cleared, obviously, but we're gonna look at topo. He doesn't anticipate an issue with water. Rob and I have talked, Randy and I have talked a little bit about the possibility of, depending on what topo looks like, of needing a lift station for wastewater. But we'll just have to see, once we see the topo, and see what the engineers say from that, so.
Okay.
Is the property locked off, or you can see what's what?
Not, not really. You can get to the top of the hill where Randy's drive will start, that you see here. But really, all you can see at that point in time is the beginning of the property. This was one of the two projects that we talked about, the planning retreat. And at that, at that meeting, and I can give it to you again if you need it, I actually gave you the view from the tax assessor's website map so that you can see more about what's around it, and I can certainly make that available again.
My only concern is that the other houses, the landowners, don't want to interfere with their quality of life.
And obviously, you won't be making a decision at all until the other developer comes and does his presentation at the next meeting, and then we can talk about. The equity fund grant is purely for infrastructure. It cannot be used for any of the buildings. But if two and a half million dollars were awarded, that would go a long way of getting the infrastructure in for the entire complex. So that would be planned accordingly.
Their time, is there a timeline on that?
Timeline in terms of when you have to use it?
Yeah.
I don't know that. I wouldn't find that out for sure. The equity fund applications are on a quarterly cycle. And just to make sure everything was being, we were proceeding with the way we needed to. Carlos had actually had some conversations with DCA. I've had some conversations with DCA. The property would have to be annexed prior to the equity fund application being submitted. So we've got to go through that process. That typically is at least a 60-day process.
Being that they have requested to come and annex it.
Well, he will, he will come. He has not actually requested to annex it at this point in time.
Oh, he hasn't?
One developer, the other, if you all approve going with one or the other of these projects, that developer will then have to come forward to request the annexation. I don't anticipate, Randy and I have talked about that a little bit, the developer and I really have not discussed it, but Randy is gonna hold off on the annexation application until he knows for sure if he can have a partnership there. And we will work through that process, but as soon as it can be annexed, after the application is submitted, it will be. And I know Randy, he already has his equity fund application ready to go. He sent me a copy of it with this. So if this, if there's a partnership and this is the project, then the equity fund application can go to DCA the very next day after it's annexed.
Yes, and I would just like to add that the two and a half million grant would really be a jumpstart in getting this project going.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Quite a jumpstart.
I can see that. Infrastructure is expensive.
So do you see, they have specific guidelines as far as funding, the person that's trying to buy this particular unit? Is it's gonna be, you know, you have some areas like these type homes, they'll come in, or we have a specific financing that you can go through to get it approved? Or it doesn't matter, the person will be able to go through whatever funding?
At this point, Madam Mayor, I don't know all the ins and outs of that. I just know that they're, again, they've got a mandated $290,000 ceiling. I haven't seen anything yet on the requirements of who it can be sold to, but I'm assuming it's an open market, anybody that wants to buy it for 250,000. it's an open market, anybody that wants to buy it for 250 or 275, but I don't know that 100% yet. I'll be looking at it.
That's my understanding of the grant thus far, is that it is an open market.
Open market, okay.
If it has to handle the lift station, do you see?
We might be able to look at that as part of the infrastructure cost, if it can be figured that way. And then we can, you know, we can make a decision based on that. If, you know, if the annexation has occurred, if the annexation occurs, that might be a piece of that pie, if you like, another way to put it. Just simply because of the increase in property values if this ever comes, when that happens. But that's certainly something, that's the conversation we can have when we get down to really get into weeds if this is a big issue. This particular project will need less, less work from a traffic control infrastructure situation than the other one. I saw, I'm gonna say about that logic until y'all hear about it in two weeks, but you'll see with that project, a fair amount of the grant will need, unless the developer willing to fund it, will need to be expended on traffic control issues that it could cause. If you all need new hard copies of what Randy has shown you tonight, let me know. Except they are the ones that y'all received at the planning meeting, but we can certainly stick them in your box again if for some reason they got in with your GMA stuff. And I'll definitely make sure all of you get the tax assessor's map, so that you can see what the property is around.
Okay.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. At this time, we're gonna move on to the city manager's report, and I'll recognize Mr. Griffin for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna take just a quick minute, because I know that we've got a closed session tonight, it may take some time, so I don't wanna take a whole lot of time here. There, first of all, I'd like to thank Melba for serving as I clerked tonight. And I was gonna try to do it all myself, and she said, "Do you want me to stay tonight?" I said, "Yes."
I got you mentioned.
Jimmy has been at a P&amp;Z meeting when I was trying to do it all, and he's really glad Melba's here, I can assure you of that. The other thing is on Ordinance 240611, which is the Ordinance Amending Chapter Six of the Millisville Code of Ordinances for Alcohol, Distilled Spirits Package to Go. On Page Two of that, you know, you read these things over and over and over and over and over, and multiple people read them, and still even then occasionally one will get past you. But at the top of Page Two, you can see the word says "everyone," as in everyone, as in all of us. That is incorrect. It should be "licensed for every," and then a separate word, "1,600 people." And we'll make that, we'll make that change before it's signed, if it's passed tonight. But I wanted to make you aware that that was a typo that was not caught and will be changed once it's, prior to being signed if it's passed tonight, so. And with that, you see here, that's all I have.
All right, so we'll move on to all business. And I will ask the clerk to please read Ordinance O-2406-11.
An ordinance amending Chapter Six of the City of Millisville Code of Ordinances should provide for a limit on the issuance of new licenses for retail sales of distilled spirits packaged to go within the territorial limits of the City of Millisville.
You have heard the ordinance. I will ask for a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance.
Move, we approve.
Second.
I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. It's been properly motioned, second, I'm sorry.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
With that, the ordinance is approved. We move to new business, and I will ask the clerk to read Ordinance O-2407-12, which was added with the agenda amendment by caption as a first reading.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to allow for rezoning of property located at 230 North Warren Street. This property is currently owned by Renee Butz and is Zoned SFR2. Applicant desires to rezon property to MR2 and provide for a duplex apartment.
All right, this rezoning comes at the request of the property owner, Renee Butz. This is the first reading, and the ordinance is assigned to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next, we have our resolution that are ready for adoption. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R-27, 2407-27 by caption.
To authorize an agreement for communication services.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Mayor, if I could, let me make just one comment quickly, in case anybody is wondering. This actually is a continuation of a contract with Windstream. One of the reasons we're doing this now is because we can lock in the prices for three years, and this is the initial step to go into a voice-over IP system, for the phone system, for the City of Millisville. That's something we've been needing to do for quite some time. Windstream has shared with us that our current system probably will no longer be supported within the next 24 months, so we'll be certainly making that move. We have been looking at different voice-over IP systems, and to be quite frank with you, they are pretty much all the same. And there seems to be some simplicity to the one with Windstream in that we would not have to have our current numbers ported to another carrier. And we anticipate that we'll be able to go to the voice-over IP system and it not cost any more and possibly even a little less than we're paying now.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved?
Second.
Are there any questions?
Just one quick note here, Hank. On Page Three of the renewal addendum, the attachment, there's one at the very bottom, second from the bottom, that doesn't say City of Millisville.
The Bass Signal Corporation, that's a red light.
That's a red light?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
I hadn't, I hadn't, Kalinda, made the motion and I seconded it?
Um, no.
They did, and then we called for it again. But they, Dr. Lee, when you first called for the motion-
And he, okay.
-did it and you seconded it, and then you, then Hank had us comment, and then you called for the motion.
Okay, well, the first emotion and second will stand as given. Are there any questions or comments? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All right. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2407-28 by caption.
A resolution to authorize the restructuring of the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Low Interest Loan as awarded by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to 111 North Wayne Street LLC.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
No move?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Resolution stands approved. I will ask the clerk to-
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Got a new sheriff in town tonight writing up the minutes. The ordinance is adopted. I will ask the clerk to, we do not have any alcohol license applications to consider for tonight. We have two first-time appointments to make tonight. The first name that has been submitted is Willie May Wright for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. I nominate Willie May Wright for appointment to the Military Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
We approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please read, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
The second name that has been submitted is Matthew Forrest for appointment to the Allied Arts Board. I nominate Matthew Forrest to the Allies Arts Board. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
Who did the motion?
Dr. Lee. And who seconded it?
Second.
Ms. Chambers?
Second.
Ms. Chambers? Is there any discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
We do need to go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
There's been motion and second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All right, at this time, we're gonna go into closed session, and when we're back at the dais, I'll call the meeting back to order and ask the clerk to call the roll. Ask the clerk, please call the roll. Dr. Lee, will you be, you gonna call the roll? Oh, this clerk, I'm calling out here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
This concludes the items on the agenda. Does anyone on council have any questions or comments?
I have one question. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the status on the door?
We are still waiting on the control panel to come in. It's been ordered by Crawford Electric.
Okay.
To come in. You all, you all can go out of it tonight.
We can go out of it.
Push the green button and go out of it, so you can go through down there and grab stuff out of your box if you want to.
Okay.
Just can't come in, right?
That's correct, that's correct. And push the button and push on the door all at the same time, because if you don't push the green button, the door ain't moving. But I'm, I'm hoping that it won't be too much longer.
How's the progress on the paving, the soft surface at Central City Park?
We are, Eric from Garrett Fence Company, I talked to him last Wednesday morning. He said he is waiting on some more steel to be able to cut some additional posts. Well, what happened is they'll put the post in first, then the rubberized surface will be put on, and then they'll come back with the vinyl clad chain link fence after that. So he's waiting on some posts. I didn't know this, this was news to me. They make all of their own gates, and they're waiting on some heavy-duty posts to come to make the gates out of, so.
Couple of three weeks?
You know, I've stopped even giving estimates on it, Walt, because they always come back to bite me.
When you hear something, give me a holler.
But I will, I will. Don't worry, I'll let everybody know when it's ready. We'll all go down there and play on it together.
There we go.
It's, I didn't realize-
That's why I like having ribbon coating.
And we will. I didn't realize how big it was gonna be, quite frankly. I mean, when you get down there, it's really, it's really, it's very impressive, really big, and folks are excited about it in the community.
You can see it far away. Yeah, it is very visible. Weight limit on it?
Um, to be honest with you, I don't know. I haven't had that conversation with the folks at PlaySouth yet, but I will certainly find that out.
Check on that.
There will be, as part of the installation, there are safety signs that will go on the gates, and they are also going to extend the rubberized surface from each of the gates to the asphalt surface just behind that retaining wall, so it will be ADA accessible.
Okay. Her reason for asking was because of college students, it had nothing to do with children. And that's a thought, because-
It is.
They do that, they do go down there and play on it. I've seen them.
We have dogs play with our children, too.
So we can, if we need to post that, then we wouldn't want 10 of them standing up on one thing at one time to see how many can get in there, like we used to do with the phone booths. Let me just date myself.
Or Volkswagen.
We see how many can get in the phone booth at the postway. Oh, yes, I did.
Is there any cheerleaders? Any other question, comments? I wish Mr. Chambers and Ms. Map a very, very happy birthday.
Yay!
I'm a year younger.
I gotta blast Mr. Chambers on Facebook. I blast Ms. Map, so I gotta go back and put Mr. Chambers. And you all know, I don't care what I advertise, in seven years, I know I'm spending some money advertising, but I never do it without this team, because y'all are such a great team. So I never brought the book for you all to see it. I got so many compliments from my sisterhood, everybody that. I got what I had. I had to take what I had and do it in a hurry. So, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't let Ms. Walden see it, so. This is for Georgia Association of Minister Wives and Minister Woodrow. I've been in that organization for 15 years. Can't believe I've been a minister's wife that long, but 15 years. So, yeah, I know, whatever I do, whether it's Christmas or whatever the holiday is, I'm gonna always do something and make sure I include this team.
That group was very impressive at Chief Young's mother's funeral.
Very impressive.
Thank you. I hate I wasn't able to go and, "Mayor, you gonna come?" And also, I didn't tell everybody, Forrest P. Johnson, I wanna make sure you tell every child you can, they're doing a July the 20th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 back to school, book giveaway, and then Stacy Adams, which I'm gonna have to ask either Ms. Denee, or any of you all, or Ms. Map, would they like to attend? It's a formal thing, Saturday night, maybe Sunday, I need to go back and look at it. But he's having my favorite in the world performer, R&B performer, which is Anthony Hamilton, and he wants counsel at the Harriet Tubman Museum. It's a little formal thing, because they're gonna dance. I think they're doing a videotaping over there as well, so you're welcome to go and enjoy that particular event. It's this weekend, if I'm not mistaken, but I'll shoot back and make sure you all get the date in time. So if nothing else to talk about-
The Alka County School District, back to school batch, if you all would please come out, we do have a tournament in the academy, June 19th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Before they have the-
What's the location?
The Academy, Friday.
Friday.
July 19th. And what time? 11 to 1, 11? Okay.
And also, Mayor, I'll send everybody an email about this, but I just got it today. The solar project, solar training project that we did with Georgia College through the Partnership for Innovation, they are doing their capstone presentation for that on the 29th, from 11:00 to noon on the campus, and I'll send you this information, but I'd love for as many of you to be there as you could. And then, once it cools off a little bit, I'm gonna plan a road trip to the water treatment plant to show you all where they installed the solar system. Get it there, because that kind of begins a green energy thought process at that plant. And if you didn't notice, in the latest Georgia Cities Magazine from GMA, that program was, was, had an article about it in the Georgia Cities, GMA Magazine, for May and June, so please take a look at that. But I'll shoot that to you. I'd love for all of you to be there, that could be from 11:00 to noon, or 29.
Someone's gonna ask you, did you give them all a copy of that article?
They all get one in their boxes. GMA sends one to everybody, we put it in their boxes.
And that's July the 29th?
June 29th. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, July 29th. It's June 29th, we all- It's June 29th, we all missed it, didn't we?
Yeah.
All right, so, nothing else to stick, talk on, leave? They send church, all the hearts and minds of Phil. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Motion to adjourn.
Oops, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to be over here. Okay?
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
You did it in so long time, meeting adjourned.